For the meeting for planning board tonight, Monday, October 4th, 2021. Our chairman Dylan O'Connor is out. My name is Mike Funafun. We have Bob Schaffer, Kate Hollister here, and we have Darren Rees on the line. To begin, start with open forum. Anybody from the board have anything you want to?
I'm going to be absent the next few days at minimum, so I'm going to just notify all the board. Virtual, like Darren or however they choose to.
Hybrid, whatever.
All right. Yep. Kate?
It's happening for me.
Darren?
Yep. No, nothing. I'm all set.
All right. Jeff?
Joe's got one thing and I have another.
On behalf of the town moderator, she asked that we make an announcement at this meeting tonight. Just a reminder about a special town meeting coming up. It will be held at Westford Academy Field on Saturday, October 16th, beginning at 1:00 PM. It's expected the meeting will take approximately one to two hours, and it needs to be at least 200 voters to make a quorum, so please try to attend. Those of you that are registered to vote. There'll be a few different items, some to be discussed. Some of them include funding the design of a new roof at the Blanchard School, installing energy charging stations in throughout Westford, and limiting motorboats on Keys Pond. So just a reminder about the special town meeting, October 16th, beginning at 1:00 PM.
Is there a rain date for Sunday, I think?
That's correct.
Yes.
Just one other note, I won't speak to the details, but I have done two random drive-throughs at Millworks. I could do more. I would encourage my fellow board members to do the same. Saturday afternoon seemed to be a good time to see.
I don't think we should discuss.
No.
No, no, not just Scott, just I encourage you guys to go and look at it, and as I say, I stopped in the neighborhood, I stopped by Millworks.
Yep.
I was just going to announce that if anyone was here tonight for the 22 Town Farm Road application, the applicant requested continuance to the next meeting, October 18th, without any discussion.
On to public hearing items. First on our agenda is PB 2130, 33 Robinson Road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Arsene Hambardzumi, and I'm with Nestre Engineering. Thank you for having us. I know it's been some time since we have seen each other. I think it was through Zoom. We wanted to come by and tell you that we've made some significant progress. We're very close to addressing all the engineering comments. Of course, they'll have to review it and let us know that, but we feel good about it. We've done some additional geotechnical engineering, some review. We've shifted the fields over based on conservation requests, graded it, elevated it even more to provide more groundwater separation. We've added four bays, a new treatment area, to take care of the runoff off the parking lot, and we've also shifted the parking a little bit in. So we, instead of continuing it and having everything happen at once, we wanted to come here and tell you that we've been working diligently on this project and we're closing in on it. And if there was any questions or any concerns you have, I'd be happy to answer them.
Before we get to Paul, do you?
No, we haven't received their addressed comments yet. We did late in the week, last week, we saw our geotechnical report that looked promising, but we'll wait for them to respond to our comments and govern ourselves accordingly.
Darren, do you have anything you want to ask?
Nope. I saw the notes from a couple of the concerned parties in town. Everything looks good so far, just waiting to hear back from Paul and engineering on the final, final review, but everything overall looks good.
Bob?
Yeah, I guess, and we may have addressed this before, but it's been a while. I'm just looking at the parking layout for the bus area where it's adjacent to the courts. I'm assuming there's going to be appropriate signers that announces that's a drop-off area only, and it's no standing, and it's no parking.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. One way in, one way out, angled parking, drop-off only for the buses. There's not sufficient room to have both.
Yeah, it's also going to be blocking the cars, it looks like, when the, seeing this diagram.
Yeah. Having, having spoke to the parties and the organization with the buses, typically that's what happens. They come, they drop off the team, they go elsewhere until it's pickup time, and then they return.
And speaking of that elsewhere, is there any thought to, you know, we have another lot adjacent to that where you could have some standing area for the buses. Has there been any thought given to helping the buses find a place where they could park for that period of time? Specifically, I'm looking up here, I guess, north of that circle.
I think the desire is to try to eliminate as much happening at the school parking lot because sometimes they'll coincide with recess, with the school release, and they don't want the added congestion that can happen with buses and additional vehicles. That's kind of the reason for the entire parking lot being separately accessible, but from what we're told, the bus drivers don't necessarily look to stay around. They typically go get food or take their break.
Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah. All right. That's everything I have.
Thanks, Bob. Kate?
No, thank you. I just had some questions, and maybe it's just because you haven't done the final plan set yet, but on the, let's see, the existing condition one, you have that sewer line that you're going to remove it, but then on all the other plans, it looks as though you're keeping it in the same place.
So we are going to reroute it all the way around the courts. It'll go through the parking lot, around the other side, and tie in up north where that bend is. Or, I have a.
Conservation isn't going to let.
What's that?
Not, not the way you had it on the plans that you submitted before.
The original plans had them going through the area where they were near the wetlands. Conservation requested that we relocate them and provide more separation, and we have obliged to do so. It'll go through here now.
Oh, okay.
On this side, instead of before going through here.
Okay, so the plans that are in our packet are incorrect, too?
They haven't been updated yet.
Okay. And the other thing on the plans that are in our packet, the landscaping plan, I appreciate all the variety of plants that you have, but for, for readability, it would, in the plan, you use symbols to denote each species, but then in the legend, you use the letters, and it's hard to tell which symbols go with which letters, so you might, might just, in the final plan, include symbols in your legend.
Happy to do this, so I think that's some of the comments we received from engineering as well.
And are there any waiver requests?
I don't believe there was, no.
Okay, so.
I believe so, limited site plan review.
Okay. Yeah, those, those were just the comments that, but as you just noted, what we got isn't the final.
Whatever we can take back and address ahead of time for the next meeting, that's the better for us.
Okay.
All right. Anybody from the audience? You want to come back? When do you want to come back? Next meeting's the 18th.
So within one week, we can have everything to engineering? Is that sufficient time?
I can't predict this time of year. It's the end of the construction season. Every project I have is going double time to get their projects done, so we are straight out. I can't, I can't make a commitment to that date, but we'll try.
Conservation.
Want to say the 18th, and if we need to push it, we can just request it.
Conservation's the 27th. Is there a date that's closer to that?
November 1st.
November 1st.
That, that hopefully will give us all ample time, and we'll close it right around the same time, hopefully.
Yeah, that works for me.
Yeah, we're not going to put it on the shelf, but I, we just, it's, I'm hyper busy right now.
All right. At this point, I'm going to get a motion to continue this till the November 1st meeting.
I move that we continue to our November 1st meeting, starting at 7:30, and I, at this time, it will be here in Town Hall, but people should check back in case the location, in case it becomes a remote.
Right, and that will be indicated on the agenda. So if you always check the agenda, you'll know if it's being held here or virtually, so.
All right, so since Darren's away, we'll have to poll all those in favor. Darren?
Aye.
Bob?
Was there a second? I'm sorry.
Was there a second?
Bob, say yes.
Second, yes.
All right. Well, this is David, Darren?
Aye.
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ars.
So I'm going to be recusing myself from the next hearing. We're going to leave you in the capable hands of Kate.
Thank you. Darren, can you hear okay?
Yep, yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, because I'm way at the other end of the table. So we are now on PB 2133, subdivision, definitive subdivision plan and stormwater management permit for 22 Griffin Road, also known as Cloverleaf Fields. And we have the applicant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Philip Treffler. I'm standing in for Doug Duchesne this evening. With me here is our engineer, Steve Dresser, as well as George and DJ Allen, the applicant's for 22 Griffin Road. We are continuing to work with the town engineers to develop, develop and figure out this project. There are a few issue, there are a few issues that we felt that we'd like to come back before you, get your feedback on, and get your perspective, perspective moving forward. And as they are of more technical nature, I'd like to turn things over to Mr. Dresser, who would be able to address those more competently than I. Thank you.
How you doing? Steve Dresser, Dresser Williams &amp; Way, representing George Allen &amp; Sons Construction. We have revised the plan based on some of the public comment, as well as discussion at the site walk, and planning board review, and engineering review. They're us. I am meeting with the town engineer tomorrow morning to discuss some of the drainage issues, some of the technical stuff. There are a few items that we'd like to discuss tonight that will help us, between that and that meeting, be able to go to the final design stage. The significant revisions that we've done include increasing the cul-de-sac radius to 75 feet. It's an outside diameter of 70 feet, and there was concern that there wouldn't be enough room to, basically margin of error within there, and we were asked to expand it to 75 feet. There's been a revision in the drainage. We've eliminated, there was a large infiltration system out behind Lot 2. It turns out the Board of Health doesn't allow dry wells within 100 feet of the septic system. So yeah, up in there, there used to be an infiltration system, so. So we needed to eliminate that, and it kind of went hand in hand anyway, because we were asked to look at the Lot C, the approval not required lot, out front, as part of the whole stormwater management system. So we essentially just tied that into the system, so at that point, we were, we were piping it down. So we're piping it out to the road and down through the four-bay system and into the infiltration The change in the slope of the road, it's going to be a little bit flatter for the first portion. The first 75 feet will be at 3%, which is more of a standard design, frankly. And on Lot C, we were asked to look at opportunities to preserve trees, so we relocated the driveway up to kind of the. The question was providing vertical granite curbing for the, for the whole site. Your regulations allow for slope granite curbing, which is what we would like to do. And again, that'd be open for discussion. I know my experience with fire departments is they, they don't like vertical granite curbing because it does cut the tires as they go around curves and stuff, and even for homeowners, that would be something that'd be more likely to give them a flat tire. And again, and the plowing also, with plows, the slope granite is a lot more forgiving than the vertical granite would be. Both are granite, both will have, will last a long time. And another question was, was just on the sidewalk, and we've requested a waiver on the sidewalk. Engineering Department has just raised the question about whether or not you would want this sidewalk around the cul-de-sac. We did ask for a waiver to that. It's our opinion, you know, there's just two lots up there. They'd really be the only ones driving up there. There's not a lot of traffic. So the sidewalk would just kind of run into the cul-de-sac, and then the cul-de-sac would be used. The cul-de-sac is likely, even though it's wide, it's not going to really see two-way traffic. It's, we're all going to go around the rotary when we're going there. On that cul-de-sac with a 22-foot wide. So I think those are the, really the three items that we, we'd kind of like up for discussion, and anything else you might ask, we'd be glad to answer.
Okay, thank you. Engineering?
We're going to meet with them tomorrow. We'll.
Jeff, do you have any? Or Joe?
I don't have anything further. I think we're waiting to see what happens from the comments tonight, and they're meeting with Engineering Department.
Okay. I'll alternate. So Bob, you're first this time.
So just to have a discussion, I know Lot C and Lot 2, just focusing on that one area, because there is concern, we're obviously concerned about the sighting, sightline distance up on, on Griffin Road, and I think Cloverleaf Lane does a pretty good job at that. This driveway has improved upon that location. I guess the question is, and I know you're looking at merging these into one stormwater management plan, is there any ability, and I realize we're talking to NAR here, but to bring the driveway from Lot C out onto Cloverleaf? You know, if you were to flip the driveway on Lot 2 to the other side of the house.
I, we don't have a problem, but we don't have frontage on Cloverleaf. I'm not sure. An easement would be appropriate. One of the.
So let me, I'll tell you what, why I'm thinking this. I think what we've, what people have asked us about is any way to preserve some of that vegetation along that road there, and to minimize the number of curb cuts so that, you know, that's kind of a crazy road. It's, it's narrow. It seems to have fast speeds at times. It's got a curve there, and if we could minimize it so that we don't have a car popping out of a driveway that is seemingly too close to Cloverleaf Lane anyways by our regs, I believe. I'm not sure that has adequate separation. But if we could bring those in, and if we could somehow work with you, is there a possibility of doing?
We'd 100% gladly work with you. I don't know if you allow driveway sort easement, to be honest with you, number one.
Jeff, why don't you?
So this would require confirmation from the building commissioner, but that would likely require a special permit for a common driveway, if they're accessing not through their own frontage. So unless, I can't imagine that the frontage of that Lot C could be configured so as to have a driveway be on that lot and be far enough away from the intersection with Griffin Road to be of value. So we're talking an easement situation.
But I'm also looking at why we have Lot 4, the size we have. Is there, I mean, can we do any kind of shifting here, too, to give us?
Well, Lot, I mean, it's really a fact of the size of the, size of the infiltration basin.
Okay.
And then, you know, your driveway, your house, that house is actually 16 feet off the property line, as shown.
All right.
And you do, there's a little, you know, your zoning bylaws say that you have to have your required frontage, I forget how it's worded, but basically 50 feet back from, from your, your front setback. So any frontage that goes beyond, if you drew a line perpendicular to the, to the right-of-way to the property line, is not, cannot be used as legal frontage. So you have to have the 200 feet. So up in that corner, it, it may have more than 200, I believe it would, but up in the corner there, that, that angle that does not have 50 feet perpendicular to Cloverleaf is basically lost frontage. So actually straight up, yeah, like that, wherever that 50-foot line is. We, we, top of my head, I don't see it, but I won't tell you that. I won't reevaluate it and see if there's something we could do. Now, it's not a common driveway. It's a, it's an easement. Is that?
I'm going to need clarification from the, the building commissioner, because we've had instances where it has been determined to require a special permit.
Okay.
Okay.
And the process of the special permit, is that through the planning board, the zoning board?
Planning board.
Okay.
So if there were a, a little awkward, but if there were a definitive subdivision approval, there could be a possible condition of approval that you seek.
Yeah.
Special permit relief for common driveway. And obviously, you can't guarantee, even in this case, third-party approval. That is something that, you know, I, I think it would remove some of the uncertainty normally surrounding driveway special permit.
And we'd have a fallback if it weren't approved, that would.
Exactly.
Yep. So.
I, I, you know, Doug's not here, and he's kind of the primary.
Yeah, but I'm.
I don't really see, do you guys see, do you understand that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that shouldn't be an issue, condition.
We will.
It's workable.
Absolutely continue that conversation with, with you knowing that we're willing to do what it takes.
And just the other thing, I think one of the residents had forwarded to me a concept plan, and I think we spoke about this during the site walk.
Yep.
So it's in the packet, so I just want to make sure you're aware it was there, so.
I am. I mean, it's, it, it just doesn't mean zoning. I mean, it's that, it's that simple.
Yep.
We're not here on an open space plan. I like, I like the concept, but.
I understand. Joe?
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Darren, do you have any comments?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, I think the drainage was, you know, a primary discussion point when we did the site walk, so I'm looking forward to, you know, seeing the details of engineering on that. You know, I like Bob's idea that if we could get that driveway onto Cloverleaf somehow, and, you know, reduce one of the openings onto Griffin, I think that would be great. So I'd be, I'd be happy to see something like that happen, be able to hopefully work with you guys on that. I just have a question, too, for Paul. In terms of the slope versus vertical granite curbing, Paul, what's the big advantage of the vertical versus the slope? Is it for drainage?
No, they're both going to, Paul's there at Town Engineer, they're both going to perform the same for weather events. That's not the issue. The slope granite does come, come out into the pavement a little bit, and we see some differential settlement and cracking over the years, and the vertical granite is more abrupt. We'd still like to see vertical out on the radiuses to pronounce the entrance a little bit more, if otherwise, we don't have any concerns about slope granite in the subdivision itself.
We don't object, we don't object to vertical curve at the radius.
The radiuses out here, just it pronounces the, it, it makes it clear where to turn. You're not going into people's driveways and late at night, and they'll delay the project because you can't get radius vertical granite curve right now, despite of all our trying, but.
It seems to me, doesn't, if this is going to be a public road, doesn't highway prefer vertical for plowing purposes?
On the, on the turn-ins, yes. And so this is the, the first that we've heard about this being proposed as a public way, so we'll have to go back and make sure that we address the project accordingly. You know, we, we do, we're a lot more lenient and overlooking things when the town is going to be responsible to take care of the road in perpetuity. The 24-foot wide pavement, for example, if we're, our plow equipment is going down there, we need to know that we can get all of every, all of our equipment down there, and that's where the, that's one of the things that drives the 24-foot wide pavement. And if you're taking out the sidewalks, if you're going to waive those and make it 22 feet, that's going to be, that's going to be just way too narrow. It's going to have the visual appearance of being a tight, narrow, but, you know, that's, that, that's just what we're hearing. I'm hearing about that tonight, so.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. That's helpful. And then, yeah, obviously, there's some comments from, you know, the neighbors, folks who live in the area, walk in the area, so any, you know, any consideration to, you know, of some sort of walkway along the, along the edge of the development would be great. And then I know, I think I read about, you know, discussions with the water department are kind of on hold, but when that reopens, I think we had talked about maybe incorporating that path along where that easement would be for the, for water potentially as well. I just want to keep those discussions open as well. Thank you.
The, the Water Commission is meeting again on October 13th. As far as, like us putting some kind of sidewalk on Griffin Road, there's really, there's a stone wall that's kind of out within the right-of-way, and the septic system also, the grades associated with what we need, it's really kind of prohibit us from putting a sidewalk on Griffin Road. Certainly willing to, to try to find a way to connect some kind of walking path out to Old Wall Road in conjunction, either with the water project or otherwise, you know, and I know there's public comments, I don't know if we want, if we're going to go through those or, or what, but most of them are along the line of, would like to see a sidewalk on Griffin Road, and would like to see a connection. You know, Griffin Road is probably a DPW project if it's, if it's, if the town would choose to put sidewalks. You had one comment that they didn't want the sidewalks on there, so that, that's always something that's a little, some people do, some people don't, most people do. But, you know, it's not really part of our subdivision. Lot C is a approval not required lot. So anyway, that's, that's where we stand.
Well, that's good. I think, you know, ultimately, if we could have some, you know, walk-through somehow with an easement, I think that would be, it'd solve a lot of problems, I think, so just for future consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Darren?
No, good for now. Thanks.
Okay, Darren, I'm going to be talking a lot towards, they have this, the, which plan is this? Because if you could zoom out a little bit, which plan?
This is just a site grading plan. This is.
Yeah.
This is the revised plan. We didn't put in a full set because we, we still have the meeting with engineering and such, but this, this was really just showing the revisions that we've agreed to, to the point that we were able to get it to you to, for this public hearing.
So Darren, if you want to go to the.
It's page 78 in the PDF file from today.
I'm, I'm going to be talking mainly to this, so now you can.
It's the second sheet in the pack for the print, page 78, Darren.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
If we can zoom out a little, or, yeah, I mean, the other way. So it was very hard to figure out the revised grading, because there's so much on this plan. It was hard to see what the, what the topo lines are, the existing versus the plan. So in our site walk, we were talking about the cul-de-sac, and you had mentioned that you had to bring in eight feet of fill.
I don't know if it was eight feet, but it's, it's like five, they're bringing fill, and in order to accommodate the slope, we've even brought it up, that's what we've brought it up to for, to, to get the slope that was requested by the engineering department.
Yeah, so, so Paul, I don't know, I have some ideas, because there were, there were two trees on, on this side that were really nice.
I think it's right there.
Yeah.
These two trees, and you were saying that you had to remove them because the fill would be going about eight, four feet of them.
At that point, if you see the, the dash lines, so I can't see it from here, but that would be like 216, I can see, I think, and then the solid line right above that. So right where, pretty much where your pen is, straight ahead, if you want, nope, you're back where your pen was near your head.
Yeah.
Like by your nose.
Give him a pointer.
Are you talking to me or?
Joe.
Yeah, yes, I'm talking to you.
So 218, 216, 218.
I can't, is it?
But I, all I, yeah.
Sorry. What's that number there is?
218.
Okay, and that's 222.
Yep.
Yep, we did reduce some of the fill down here on this one, so, but, but. So, but, but that's a four foot, so there's like a five foot fill at, at that point.
So I don't know, in your discussions tomorrow, like, is there any way the road could be shifted? Or they were saying in the walk that they had to bring in a lot of the grade because of the stormwater elements. So I don't know, based on what we talked about tonight.
What happens is, is you, you. I'm grading, and so it's, you need a two-foot offset from the groundwater to that. And then you kind of back it off from there. You need your slopes of some pipes, you need that. And with the road, you need a grade from, from Griffin Road down. And you got your septic systems that have to be, the bottom of the septic system has to be five feet above the groundwater. So that, that, that has some relevance too with that. So I, I don't, I, I mean.
So what are you trying to achieve, Kate?
You want to save those two trees.
I want to save the trees, if possible.
I, I think as we say, like, you're never gonna see a subdivision that cuts less trees than what we're cutting out here. I mean, there's literally six trees out here, but just because we have, just because it's already been clear cut.
They were just beautiful trees and they were, they looked as though they were.
I mean, if they want to propose something that salvages the trees, we'll look at that. Whatever they put in front of us, we'll review.
Yeah.
I just don't know how we're gonna do without grading and we can, we can't, you can't save a tree if you're gonna put four feet of fill up against it.
So now that we know it's a public way, you're putting in a waiver, a waiver request for the sidewalk. So if we go over this way. So, thank you. So 440 or so feet along Griffin Road. And I'm not suggesting a sidewalk. It would be, this part of, there was a road safety analysis done in 2017 and expressly in front of 22 Griffin Road rolled out. And that, I'm on the pedestrian safety committee and they, they provided this document to me. And so this is a concern, this whole area. So I know it's like, people don't like sidewalks to nowhere, but I think it would really help the walkers and whatever else. Not necessarily, not necessarily a sidewalk, but a path. Get it, get it towards the back of the road right of way. Or maybe an easement if you have to because of the stone, stone wall here. But if you could look at that, maybe just a meandering path to save the trees if possible. And not a sidewalk, you know, because you want a grass buffer between the, the paths and the street. But that, that would help, I think, with a lot of the concerns. And, you know, because that could help fulfill your sidewalk waiver request. Doing a path instead of installing a sidewalk. Let's see, you did the lot C already. And, and just for the audience, I know we have received plans saying, can you do the open space residential development layout? And when they divided 22 Griffin Road into two lots, this lot is actually less than 10 acres. So technically, they don't have to bring an open space plan before us. So I, while I appreciate the elements and the, and the thoughts that went into it, technically, they don't have to do one. And that's why, just, just so you know, that's why it's this way. Have you gone before E1, E11? Is that E11?
E911.
E911 yet for, for the, the street name and the house lot numbers? So there's that. And the other thing that people are, are really, really interested in is to help for pedestrians and bikes to get from Griffin over to Old Lowell, is that road.
We, as we're willing to work it, but, but there are, and just going off Google Maps, there appears to be that Koala Bear connects over to Polar Bear and Polar Bear connects out to Old Lowell Road.
Somebody in, in the audience is shaking their head, so.
Is that not the case?
And it is the case, but people who walk and get around like use multiple routes.
Yep. So.
Zoom out, Joe, does that show up? You zoom out, does that show up there?
And, and.
And we're not, and we're not, and we're not opposed.
Later on, you can give your name and say the same thing.
And we're not, we're not, we're not opposed to finding a way to make that, to make that connection.
But maybe when you're doing that, you can think of how, how could you root it so that it's, because, because you want it to come off of the street. You don't want it to just go into somebody's backyard.
Correct. We'd, we'd run it up the property line and figure out a way. One, one of the, did, I had sent you an email earlier, did you get, did you get that in, in time? It's not part.
When did you send it?
It was later in the day, like.
Today?
Yeah. But there is a, that, that pathway, as it exists, goes, actually goes across that lot up at, up at 31. So it really, it really kind of comes, I don't, I don't have one. So it, it cuts through here and really comes down, down here. So we don't have control over it in that area. But it, but it, so it can't, we can't use the existing trail that's out there all the way.
Yeah.
But, but we'll try to.
Maybe you, maybe you can root it in that, that piece that they.
Yeah, and a lot of this has to do, if we get, if we end up getting some permission from the water, water department to, to connect it, you know, it's gonna, you know, that will come down this way, cut through here because of the wetlands to try and be 50 feet and, and come down probably this line. And we'll just do it along, you know, we'll coordinate with that easement. But, but we'll work with you to find a way to, to make a connection out to that trail.
And I know you have individual lots here, but I didn't know, since these are the two biggest lots, if it was worth chunking off a little bit of, of each for the stormwater as common land. And that way, common land could also have the trail so that it's on common land and, and not an easement on somebody's property.
We still have to, we have to meet zoning, we have to.
We don't, we can't, our lots won't conform.
Okay. It was just an idea.
The only way it would be possible, Kate, would be an easement.
Okay.
And, and we are negotiating potential easement with the water department, which would essentially go right where you suggested a, a, a walking path could go. So it may turn out, as, as Steve said, we could coordinate the two. Be the same.
Right. Same stretch.
But we are willing to work with you to get that.
And I know highway or fire is recommending the 24-foot road and the vertical granite. And I know it's a trade-off thing, so, and it's only five houses. So I personally, I would be willing to consider no sidewalks on cloverleaf if you do these extra things that, that engineering has recommended. That, that's my opinion, nobody else's. I haven't asked them. So, you know, it, it's a, something to consider. On the plans themselves, I know we don't have the final set, but just on, on the front page, if you can include any waiver requests, that would be appreciated to have them on the cover page. And I had, I had something on a, the landscape plan, but I guess not. So. I think that was, oh yeah, on your landscape plan, you just have suggestions. I don't know if on the final one you might, is, is it still gonna be suggest, suggested trees? Or you're gonna have?
Is there anything specific that you would prefer or?
Yeah, I, I don't have any specifics.
We'll try to talk to somebody.
Those two lovely trees. But, uh, so most, most, most plans that we get, they, they give suggestions and of what they would actually plant. But I don't know, it's not.
We'll look to get some input from planting department and staff as to what the preferred trees are.
Yeah.
We can suggest something, but if someone has an opinion on what they think is better and, you know, more resilient, we're, we're happy to work with the, you know, planting staff.
You probably haven't done your tree thing yet, have you?
I recommend a green one.
Hardwoods.
That's pretty much where I am.
The extent of my landscaping knowledge right there.
I think that's, that, that's all that I had. So opening it up to the audience, come up to the microphone. Wait a minute, Jeff.
One quick thing. So that was interesting, you mentioned the possibility of waving all sidewalks. I just want to make sure, you talked about a meandering pathway and access through to Old Lowell Road. I know engineering always reminds us on occasion about potential accessibility issues. So we just want to make sure whatever direction the board leans to for giving the applicant some direction for revising their plans. We just want to make sure that we're not creating any new issues with that, so.
And I, I don't know, Bob and Darren, does that sound like a reasonable?
Trade-off, yes.
Trade-off?
Yep, that's for me.
Okay.
It'd probably go easier for the 24-foot wide pave if you didn't have a sidewalk, I would imagine.
Yeah. Absolutely. Still, are we still at the point where we're okay with the entryway being vertical and the rest of it being sloped?
That would be my recommendation.
That's fine.
Either that, I don't know. Ask highway if it's gonna be a public road, how they feel. And, and another thing.
Director of Public Works is here tonight. But, but I will, I will say that that's, that's, that's what we concur, that, that the vertical at the entrance and the sloped around is satisfactory.
Another thing for, for our, our Public Works Director is in the past, I know the highway superintendent didn't really like granite curbing around the, the circle, the radius. So I don't know if that's still.
It's a design feature here, so.
Your, your regulations specifically say that curbing is not recommended on the inside of a.
Okay, did it get changed? Okay, great. For some reason, I keep thinking it's still required.
Those were the old metric plans, like that doesn't work anymore.
Never mind. I should know by now. Okay, thank you.
Emily Teller, Nine Texas Road. I think it's new metric plans we're moving to, right? From the old decimal points. I have a couple of things to talk about, if that's okay. The first one is the road, the, the old gravel road. And I guess I would like you to show it on the plans, just so that everybody can know where it is. I have a map that I got today from the assessor's office and it's clearly marked on there. And so I guess just for argument's sake, it'd be nice to have it on the plan.
On the original, so it'd be down. I think that one there has.
Are the lot lines marked?
Well, it would be on the existing, it should be on the existing conditions plan.
There's a little bit of it.
That's, that's, and I can, and we'll put it on the plan if you're curious, I can, I did.
But it, but it would have to be moved because, because if you follow the way it is, it's gonna just go into somebody's backyard.
Right, I see that. Although it would, I mean, these are the lot lines, I assume now, right?
That would be that one that you're looking at of the new lot, yeah, the most recent lot lines. There's one change from that. There is a new revision from the plan that's on the screen there.
Okay, but it looks like it could go along this lot line.
Well, yeah, that's where it exists.
No, no, no.
No, this is the existing, right?
That's, that's what, that's what we just suggested. The, the easement we're working with the water department would run down that narrow neck.
Which is shown here.
Right. But, but you'll see that that plan which shows where the road is today.
Yeah.
Where it comes off a low road, it goes up onto somebody else's property.
Right, and that still looks like it's doing.
We would, we would move it down onto our property. Correct.
To here.
Correct, that's what we're suggesting.
So I'm really in favor of that for a couple of reasons. First of all, it's historic and as some of the neighbors are mentioning, people still use that to access different places, I think. And I also have to put on my second hat here. I am a board member, one of two board members in Westford for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. I should be talking to you guys. And it would be fabulous if people from Old Lowell Road didn't have to go all the way up to South Chelmsford Road and then all the way down South Chelmsford Road to get to the rail trail. So they could just come through this area and go Griffin Road. My husband and I ride on Griffin Road all the time to get to the rail trail. We live on Texas Road. So that would be another really major benefit of keeping that gravel area or even paving it. I don't know if you want to pave it or not. So that's the first thing. And also, I agree with Kate, I think probably there needs to be one sidewalk in this development for ADA reasons and for safety off of the roadway. I drove through Koala Bear before I came here tonight and there is one sidewalk on Koala Bear. It's pretty narrow, it's asphalt, but there is one sidewalk on half of that that goes all the way out to Griffin. And so I think one would also be a good thing to have here. I think two sidewalks, you'd be getting rid of half of the pavement that you need to, to do both sidewalks. I'm also very, very much in favor of the meandering path idea. I also drove over there today. I looked where the stone wall was and it seems to me, could you go back to that lot area and the side of the road by Griffin? Thank you. It just seems to me that there is space on the other side of the stone wall that would not take down trees. And I think keeping people off of Griffin is a pretty wonderful thing at that point. There's a hill and a curve, so it's a little tricky for people coming back from the rail trail. I'm not sure people would use it going to the rail trail. But I think a meandering path would be great for you guys to put in as a, as a part of a mitigation with the sidewalks and the granite siding, whatever you call that, shoulders. And also I think that the person who lives on, I mean, I can't speak for somebody, obviously, but the person who lives on Koala Bear, you know, it may be that the town can take an easement and continue your meandering path down there because it's way far away from their house and it would get it all the way to Koala Bear. So then that would basically connect those two. And I guess I would like to put into the public hearing that I'd like as many oaks planted as possible in this subdivision with the bags around them so that they could be filled. Because once you plant a tree, it's really difficult to keep it going. It needs to be a big enough caliper, but then you have to weigh how confined the root ball is to a bigger caliper tree, so. But as many oaks as possible would be great, one on every lot.
With a bag?
Well, if you dig up, I mean, when they grow trees to be planted, sometimes when they get big enough calipers, then the roots are bound and it damages the tree to dig them up and transplant them or replant them. So it's a trade-off, I think. And I, you just have to get a really good nursery company who could be assured of being able to plant those in the ground. I mean, one on every lot would be fabulous. That would be a minimum. Because they're really important. They're the number one eco-supporting tree that exists in North America.
The requirement is more than that. I think it's one every 50 feet on average.
Okay, well, whatever, you know.
Even better.
Yeah, or, I mean, you have, they spread out. They get very big. So it could be that you put, you know, an evergreen and an oak or whatever, but, you know.
An oak and a maple or an oak.
Back to you on this, yeah, sugar maples would be beautiful on this.
I was agreeing. Men acting temporarily.
I've tried very hard to get a list of native species for the conservation commission and if and when I ever get it, I will turn it over to you guys.
If you look at their plan, they had a list of suggested trees. So if you look at their list and you might, if you see any, you could send an email with recommendations from their list or something.
Okay, thanks. I, I wish all of us would get involved with trees. I, I wish all of us would get involved with trees.
So, did I, Madam Chair, if I could clarify, did I hear Emily say that the sidewalks was an ADA requirement?
No, I think you talked about accessibility.
No, I simply, I want to make sure that if you're proposing a meandering pathway, and if you're proposing a connecting way between this proposed street and Old Lowell, I just want to make sure that if we have to have accessibility or ADA considerations for those stretches, we want to make sure that-
But understood. But Emily, what I heard Emily say was, when she was advocating for a sidewalk on one side, is that that was an ADA requirement. I'm, I'm just not familiar with that requirement.
No, I, I just wanted them to be accessible.
Oh, okay.
Sorry. I'm glad you asked me about that.
I believe the requirement is, if you build it, it has to be-
Oh, of course, yeah. But it sounded, I thought I was hearing her say that you have to build one because it's an ADA requirement.
I don't think it's meandering.
No, I didn't mean that.
But that is a good question. Do these, quote, "meandering sidewalks" have to be ADA accessible if they're open to the public?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we don't discriminate against our disabled residents.
Right.
We don't say, we don't say to some residents, "You can walk on this path, but you're in a wheelchair, so you can't use the path." I mean, of course we-
I'm not suggesting that. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that to do a five-foot wide, so it's already kind of prohibitive because of the septic system out there, so it'd be five-foot wide in certain slopes and, and flat areas, every X amount of feet and such, and-
Our engineer is quite familiar with the, if you build it narrower, what you have to do, so.
Well, Koala Bear sidewalks, I just want to say, are not-
Yeah, we'll look at it with you.
Koala Bear are not five feet. Maybe that's not a public way, but anyway.
If you look at sheet six of 10, the landscaping plan lists probably about 25 or 30 trees that are potential candidates, and several of those are of the oak variety.
What, what page is that on?
Six of 10. It's the landscaping plan.
Somebody at the last meeting asked me to-
What page on the page?
Page 84 in the packet. But no, she has the, looks like the sheet's there, that's what I was saying.
Are you the one who asked me to eliminate some of those trees?
No.
Somebody at the last meeting, or maybe it was at the Conservation Commission.
Conservation.
Okay.
Pointed out that a couple of those trees were not native, so we had to take them off the list.
That's fine.
Good.
Just don't take them off, just replace them.
Somebody knows what the native trees are. I guess that was the point somewhere earlier.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
The tree of Westford is bittersweet.
That's not a tree. Hold it around.
It's got a lot of it.
Can be. Hi.
Hello, I'm Bill Harmon. I live on Old Colony Drive. The reason I stood up here is to remind you about the letter that was delivered to the planning board from the Healthy Westford Committee. And I signed it, but it's not from me, it's from the committee. And we, the committee made three requests, and I'm happy to, happy, I want to thank you all for supporting two of the three, which is the, uh, making the old historic road a possible walkway from Griffin Road through to Old Lowell Road. And the other one, a sidewalk along Griffin Road, off, but, but set back from the road. The third one, though, hasn't been mentioned, so I want to mention that again, which is that in the middle of this 14-acre property is an area, by the way, if you have this letter in front of you, the, the page two, which is on the back, is the, the one that is a good summary. It shows that there is a wetland, a wooded wetland, to the east and to, also to the west. And in between is this property, which has some dry land. And there's a lot-
Which has some what?
Dry land.
Dry land.
And this property has been, currently is beneficial to wildlife because of that. In other words, it's part of this pretty big corridor that goes, at least the part that's shown here. In fact, it continues on toward the east. So, we're, we were also requesting, as the, as this project develops, to see if it would be possible to have an area out there where the natural conditions are not, there's no additional tree cutting in that area, and it's maybe a conservation restriction or something like that, so that it retains its value right now as, as, as a wildlife area.
So, so you would like an area that they're not going to cut trees, that might connect those two-
Yes.
Ne, wild areas?
Honestly, it's, it's just, that's actually going to happen, just as, as a factor of the conservation regulations, because it's a 50-foot no, no build in there. So, the only thing that's going to go through that stretch in the back that could cut a tree is, is your path out to the, up to Old Lowell Road.
You're saying for that area up in the top there?
Yeah, so that's, that's the limit of work there.
Oh.
So, that, that whole area, that's all going to be preserved, other than your, your path.
Thank you.
Could you do it as ECR?
No. We're not taking on a conservation restriction.
Well, actually, that, that is the nature of the reg-
It's an active legislator. We're not up for that.
But it might be something that, in discussions with engineering, that it has to be a no-cut zone or something? I don't know.
It, it will be part of the order of conditions. And we certainly have no qualms to even the planning board conditioning that, that the limit of work is the limit of work. You know, there's a, it's going to be in the order of conditions. We're going to put up signs along, along here indicating that, you know, it's an environmentally sensitive area, and that you're not allowed to go cut anything or, you know, drop your more clippings behind it or anything like that.
I'd like to just give you my opinion on that. One reason I prefer an open-space plan relative to one of these, what I would call a more old-fashioned plan, is that the lots here are gigantic, and the area that we're talking now would be part of the privately-owned land of one of those new residents there. So, to me, it would be better to have, the, I understand the point about the, the building disturbance would be limited, and I do approve, I do agree with that. But I think going into the future, it would be better to have some other way of have it be, continue to be a wildlife area, a natural area. It'd be beneficial to everybody, but it, not, not if it's, if the trees are all cut down or something like that, which could happen, just being private property, dry land. Okay, well, anyway, that's the end of my point on that.
They'd, they'd be in violation of the Wetlands Protection Act and the, and the Westford-
That's a point.
Westford Wetland Bylaw, if they were to go back there.
That's, that's true.
I'm not saying it hasn't happened, but that, that's-
Yeah.
Just like anything else.
That may solve the problem. That's a good point. It could be, the commission could arrange for posting of signs along the, the no-disturb area.
They had made it perfectly clear that we need to do that.
That's a good point. Thank you. I do support the driveway easement, rather than having another driveway. Now, I'm just being repetitious to what's already been said. And the, oh, I do have a technical question, maybe Paul, you know. It looks to me, looking closely at this plan, for this triangular lot that would be, have a driveway right onto Griffin Road, which I'm against. But anyway, it looks, looking closely, it looks like the, the property of the road goes beyond the stone wall. So, is it, is it true? Can, do you have to know, is there enough town-owned land there behind the stone wall where a walkway could be, could be put, a sort of a sidewalk?
The road, the way I see this, this is the actual paved road, and this is the edge of the right-of-way.
Correct.
Yeah, and then there's a, kind of a stone wall in there. It's not like the field stone wall you might be used to. It's a little, it's almost like piled boulders. There was a, a taking of the subdivision, of the, in Griffin Road by the selectmen in 60s or 70s or something like that. And that's the layout that is there. I don't know if they had intended to possibly put sidewalks in at that time or something, but, so this may be like the historic layout.
Oh.
And this would be like the taking that had occurred.
Hmm, I see. So, the way I'm reading it is correct. There is a little town-owned property-
Yes.
Between the, the, yes.
Hey, may I ask you- In the property boundary, there's a bit of land.
There's a bit of land. It narrows at the top here, and obviously at the bottom, it's a little further.
So, if they did the path, it might be that the top part of the-
My, 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 my biggest issue here is that, you know, we, we got a septic system here that's a minimum distance from, from the right-of-way. And we're a minimum distance from the wetlands, and the house is a minimum 75 foot from the wetlands. So, that's going to be the area of concern for me. I'm not going to tell you we can't do it, but that's the area of concern. These trees are accurately measured there on it, you know. Maybe the stone wall going bye-bye might be, might be the best thing to do. It's not, like I said, it's not one of them like historic picturesque stone walls. If you go out there, and you, you can go take a second look if you want.
Or, or just the very end of it could be shifted or something.
Something along that line.
Because it's nice having something between the people and the cars.
I meant that, though, as something that the town would do, not that the developer would do.
No, but we'd rather have the developer do it.
Okay. I have one other thing to add. Earlier today, tonight, you were talking about a place where the existing trail, or the existing walkway coming in from Old Lowell was on to an abutting property. I just want to add, that belongs to June Kennedy, and she's a noted historian here in town. And I've talked with her about this old road, and she's 100%, she's very supportive of keeping that old road. So, the reason I'm mentioning it now is if it, if there was any reason to divert it over to her property, I think she would be very supportive.
Is her property 31?
Great, I don't, don't know what that means.
Can we borrow that plan?
Yes, you can have, it is Kennedy, yes, it is Kennedy. So, she would be happy to have an easement there, I'm sure.
So, it's not a matter of diverting it, okay? It's already on that property.
Correct.
That's the thing. So, what they're talking about is they only can do work on their parcels. So, there's a segment that crosses diagonally across the parcel labeled number 31 on the plan. It does not, I mean, the, the plan that was presented in this letter is not 100% accurate. The path comes in further here and cuts across the corner.
I see what you mean.
For the question we were-
We don't even know, I don't even know how the path meanders on that narrow strip after that, because it enters it.
Here, here's the, here's the path.
Yeah, show that.
That's fine, but-
We'll make sure, we'll get the board copies of this. It was just created today, so.
Exactly.
Right, but this is her property.
This is the actual one. Yep.
Her, Sarah, maybe we'll see.
Yep.
So, she would, maybe she'll grant an easement and make it a lot easier for everybody.
Yeah.
And could you continue the material better, if she grants an easement?
Continue the, what do you mean by continue?
Well, it's, it's existing, it's existing already, so.
It's already, there's nothing to do.
Not ADA compatible.
Yeah.
But it's existing.
But it's existing, is that right?
Oh, I see what you mean.
So, so if, one piece of thought here is that if it's existing, and the other property owner is willing to grant an easement, that could allow for the first stretch, things to just simply remain as they are, and to just formalize, legitimize, you know, legal rights for the public to go over, if they're so inclined. However, if, if the water department or the water commissioners reaches a decision that it is okay to bring in water, that may not necessarily jive with the location of the existing trail net. That's, that's a separate-
You'd probably keep it on the narrow strip, as opposed to trying to put it on the existing path.
I think if I were a property owner granting easement rights for the public to keep doing what they've been doing, is different than adding utility for the benefit of another development.
Mm-hmm.
So, they have options.
Yes, oh, thanks. Good. One quick, other comment, when you spoke of the narrow strip, it's 50 feet wide, it's not that narrow.
I, I think she just meant relative to the other lot.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a good depiction of that stone wall, as I was saying, it's not, you know, the picture historic wall, it's kind of like, just kind of-
Remnants of a rubble pile.
Well, down in the trees-
Yeah, the remnants of a wall.
Down in the trees, it's even less. You know, down where the meandering path would be.
Well, the meandering path would be here, would be through with this whole, this whole point down.
Right. And there aren't a lot of big trees there.
They're, it, it's so much-
They've heard, they've heard us, they'll look at it.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any comments? If not, uh-
Hi, Drew.
Oh, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Mark Schleidenhoffen. I live on 6 Mark Vincent Drive. I, I looked at this proposal as a definitive subdivision plan of the Parker Village area, and I don't see how this is really benefiting the people that live off of this, in, in this area. I don't see any way that this proposal is making the Griffin Road any safer for the people that try to walk it from Griffin down to the Jack Walsh Fields. And I, I, there's, I, I see this as a, a safety concern in my mind. You're adding six more houses to Griffin Road. There's no betterment for this whole area. Six more vehicles, and people that live on this new development will want to get to the rail trail. They'll want to get to Jack Walsh Fields. And how are they going to do that on Griffin Road? I just don't see that in this development plan. And I think those concerns need to be addressed.
Thank you.
If I could, I think, let me ask a couple questions. From your perspective, though, how did the creation of Mark Vincent accomplish those means? I mean, that's the thing we're challenging here, is that we've got different parcels being developed at different times.
It's, it's, Griffin Road, I, I imagine, was an old town road, seen development through the, as Westford has grown. I'm sure the whole Mark Vincent Drive was built back in the late 70s, probably. There's no sidewalks there, but it's a, a walkable neighborhood. It's connected to Colonial Drive. People can walk down from Griffin Road all the way down to the end of Colonial, can cross the street to Jarvis and do a, a good walk. But I cannot safely walk from, from my neighborhood on Griffin Road, off, I mean, on Mark Vincent Drive, down to the Walsh Fields without taking my life into risk.
I understand. But, I mean, while this may not accomplish that, what we've just been talking about with this negotiation here on the historic road is a significant connection between Griffin Road and Old Lowell Road.
I think that is even going to make it, it's going to make it worse, because the people from Old Lowell Road will want to come to use Jack Walsh Fields, and how are they going to get there? How are they going to get to the rail trail? There's no real provisions for sidewalks in this old subdivision along Griffin Road, and I think that's a major concern.
Well, I guess, I think what we just heard from them was it's a significant improvement from what Emily described, how you get from Old Lowell to Jack Walsh.
Yeah, it would, but you still, you still be, you're still coming into this neighborhood, and how are you getting there?
I understand.
Yeah, it's, it's a problem.
Dave, does pedestrian safety come up with this all on Griffin?
Griffin Road is a perennial issue with the Pedestrian Safety Committee. Ever since we've had the committee, we've received lots of emails, and, and like I said, that we, the town did do the road safety assessment. It, it focused on the Carlisle Road and the Acton Road intersections, but it did also Road intersections, but it did also consider in between. But it is a perennial.
Challenge.
Challenge.
And this, and this subdivision is right on the top of the hill.
Yeah.
And you can't, there's no really good sightlines here.
It's actually, it's a little misleading, because if you go up there, you'd probably stand in the driveway and look, and it would be, but, but the road is actually in front of a house. If you want to go out there, there's a stake out there. I believe it's still there. So it was strategically placed at the top of the hill and at the outside of the curb. So there's, there's actually very good sight distance from the subdivision down Griffin Road in each direction. I agree that Griffin Road is a hump there, and along Griffin Road, that there's, there's not great sight distance, but it's.
You cannot see.
It's not our obligation to fix existing problems. What you're suggesting is the people who own the horse farm shouldn't be able to develop their property.
No, I'm not saying that.
That's exactly what you're saying.
I'm saying, no, I'm not. I'm not, I'm saying that there should be some provisions to do some betterment in the area. You're proposing a subdivision in Parker Village.
So I think be careful using the term. Betterment is not the right term. Improvement is what I think you're asking for. Betterment is a different legal term.
Actually, what he's asking for is off-site improvement, which is not something that you're.
And, and that's the discussion with sidewalk waivers and, and things we're suggesting for off-site improvements.
I really don't see this making the road any safer.
I think before we go and ask an individual applicant what they could do is, I think pedestrian safety is where we have to start.
With the town.
And you've got to get a plan first, and we don't have a plan by which we could even, for example, take some sidewalks and relocate them per something that pedestrian safety has, could endorse.
Right.
You know, we have other areas in town where we will do this. We will intentionally say, okay, we're going to waive half the sidewalks, and we'll ask for the equivalent length of sidewalk out in the adjacent neighborhood to improve upon pedestrian safety in that area. But we're working usually with a plan that's coming from the sidewalk master plan, coming from the pedestrian safety committee, or coming from, direction from the select board. We don't have that at this time for Griffin Road. That's, that's the challenge.
We do, we do hear you, and so.
As I say, I, I, I think what we've been talking about tonight does benefit the town. I know it may not benefit Mark Vincent Drive, but it will benefit the town if we can preserve that historic road, if we can provide the connectivity at least up to Old Lowell Road to Griffin Road, and have that preserved in perpetuity through the necessary easements and legal access. So.
But there's a portion of this development along Griffin Road that's not addressing any pedestrian safety.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's what I'm, yeah, I mean.
Anybody else?
We're done.
Please, name and address, please.
Hi, Jennifer Payne, 44 Griffin Road. And you needed my name for my comments earlier, anyway. So sorting the safety issue at the new intersection that's proposed on Griffin Road to niceties that are important to me, like having the old road preserved so that it's accessible to walkers. There are nice things, and there are important things. So you, you've acknowledged that it's a, that is by far the worst part of Griffin Road as, as a resident. As walker, driver, biker, the sightlines are terrible. So I appreciate you stating clearly where that road is. And I really like the idea of figuring out how to reroute that driveway, if at all possible, so that there's less concern at places where there are worse sightlines.
Before you go on, just, I know Doug's looking perplexed here. We talked earlier, Doug, about what we could do between Lot C and Lot 2, to see if there's any possibility of taking the driveway from Lot C and getting that located onto Cloverleaf. So instead of two curb cuts, we were down to one. And that was just before you arrived.
Yeah, exactly. I heard that, and I'm just underscoring that. I think it's important.
In your hand.
Emily's comment about one sidewalk, when she said that, it made me think about the way that school kids wait for the bus on Griffin Road, which is skinny, skinny, skinny. So at each of the side roads, if there's a sidewalk so that they're not standing in the road, the, you know, the stops are at the road. Nobody's going, no bus is going down that road. So this is a big enough development, and it's a neighborhood where there are going to be school kids. So you should picture that intersection, having school kids with snowbanks standing there. So that, that should be a part of.
So you'd like, like an open area where they can stand?
I think the idea of a single sidewalk, narrow as possible, gives you a little more leeway on one side, so that that opening is more forgiving in those circumstances.
Well, I mean, the alternative is, as opposed to a whole sidewalk down the length of the road, we could look at some kind of a bus waiting area to be built out that area. We've done that in other neighborhoods, something similar.
Sure. I, I, I think that could do it, so long as it's something that actually gets cleared and is presented to the development in a way that it's community ownership, so that it actually gets used that way. Because I've never lived in a place where that kind of thing was available. But if it isn't dug out, then it's not going to get used.
Because you put in a sidewalk, it won't get plowed in the winter, so it's better to have an area.
I guess I'm simply saying, you know, the things that keep it from getting narrower.
Yep.
It is all. Thanks.
Thank you. Last call.
Hello, Emily Teller, again, just quickly. I would still advocate for a sidewalk on one side, because people, if you're also connecting the two streets, there are going to be people walking somewhere in that road. I assume the old path will be put down the middle of Cloverleaf, or on Cloverleaf. So I think people need to know that that's an easement between the roads before they move in. And I think, in some ways, those people will be responsible for shoveling the sidewalks in front of their, their houses, hopefully. It's important to get all this before people move in.
The side of the street where the trail to Old Lowell goes, the side that has those two beautiful trees, and we'd lose them. So you have a trade-off.
We're kind of doing trade-offs.
The sidewalk on the other side.
Anyway, thank you for the idea. If there's nothing else, let's continue our next, oh, sorry, Jeff.
No, I just want to make sure, does the applicant have sufficient direction to move forward? I know you have to meet with engineering, but do you think?
I think we have to talk and bring you back a, you know, something to look at.
So the question is.
As well as meeting with the town.
Our next meeting is October 18th, and the one after that is November 1st. So which would you prefer?
October 18th.
We'd like to be continued to October 18th, yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to continue this public hearing for 22 Griffin Road to October, the October 18th Planning Board meeting that starts at 7:30 PM, 10, probably?
With the location to be specified on the agenda.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Darren?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in the morning.
Makes it look original.
Thank you. Discussions, please, outside, so we can continue our meeting, right?
That's right.
Mr. Chair?
Steve?
Madam Ex.
All right, so our next public hearing is PB 2136, 22 Town Farm Road, Buildings 13 and 16. We've got a request from the applicant. Continue without discussion until the 18th of October.
I move that we postpone PB 2136, 22 Town Farm Road to October 18th Planning Board meeting, starting at 7:30 PM. Location to be.
Posted on the agenda.
Posted on the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor? Darren?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And I say aye. Our next public hearing is PB 2139 SCE for 6 Hildre Street. This was originally posted as a concurrent planning board and tree warden hearing. Subsequent discussion with town council has determined that planning board does not have jurisdiction over this matter. As such, the applicant has asked to withdraw his application to planning board, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Kevin Erickson, on behalf of the applicant, seeking a withdrawal of the planning board portion of this hearing without prejudice.
So we'll move that along, if I can get a motion to that.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Darren?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And I say aye. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Director of Public Works, Steve Kron.
Thank you, Steve Kron, Director of Public Works and Tree Warden. As mentioned, we are going to still conduct the tree warden hearing tonight. It's being conducted in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 87, to consider removal of 1 16-inch and 1 20-inch Norway maple at 6 Hildre Street. So for that purposes, this hearing is now open. The applicant approached the town, notified them of the condition of the two trees on 6 Hildre Street. And in looking at them, we certainly concur that these trees are reaching the end of their, their life. Significant decay in the trees, there's some, some cavities. We've experienced some, some limb loss on them as well. So the applicant has asked if they can remove the trees at their cost. And the tree warden certainly concurs that these trees could potentially pose a hazard to drivers on Hildre Street, and does recommend their removal. So that being said, we can certainly open it up to any questions regarding the trees and the proposed work.
I guess I would make the one comment, in addition to what you said, Steve. I did take a look at those yesterday. In addition to a safety issue with the cars, they do represent a significant threat to the utilities that are on the poles there, I noticed. There is a significant amount of dead, dead loss. One of them, I think it's the 16 inches, had a pretty significant lean already.
It is, yes.
So, it's, it's not only a hazard to the automobile and pedestrian traffic, but it does represent a significant inconvenience potential in future for utilities that are running down that street.
Yeah, it also does represent, you know, possible hazard to the private property behind it as well. The majority of the canopy on the backside of the tree is now gone, and those, those limbs are, you know, for better or worse, dead at this point. So if they were to fall, they would likely fall onto private property.
Yeah.
Coming from town properties.
That's for the 20-inch?
Yep.
Okay.
Kate Hollister, 25 Unbrook Road. Originally, I was like, oh, that would be terrible. But since they're Norway maples, which are invasive, I have revised my opinion. But this is part of the town center historic area, and it would be great if they could be replaced by some hardwoods, like good, good maples, sugar maples or something. I don't know, probably, I don't know if you would want them on the right-of-way side of the stone wall, or maybe on the homeowner's side of the stone wall, if they're amenable, just, just to, for down the road, to keep the character of the area.
Trees can be, can be planted in the right-of-way with tree warden approval. So, you know, we haven't requested that of the applicant yet, but if they're willing to do so, we'd certainly consider it.
Thank you.
You know, make, think, I did make one note. It appears there's a septic mound potentially right there, behind the wall. Is that correct observation?
I believe that's correct, yes.
So that, that could be a hindrance in terms of putting a tree.
Well, directly there, but somewhere.
But, yeah, if we could get something along that, to, to replacement trees would, would make us happy.
I think my client would be amenable to working with the tree warden and figuring something out in that regard.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And not too close together and such.
Yeah, if we, you know, we could work together, identify, obviously, a native species. These trees, you know, with the current soil conditions, not draining well, just not ideal for that location. So we'd have to find something that, that would work here.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? All right, so at this point, we can move to close the hearing. This is going to need select board approval, which we plan to try to get at the next select board meeting. With that being said, you know, we can give approval tonight, you know, pending that approval from the select board. At that point, we could issue a permit for those trees to be removed. So I believe the select board is meeting on the 11th, and it'll be, no, 12th.
12th, maybe.
12th, rather, I think, Tuesday. So we plan to be on that agenda to make the request.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. We have to close the hearing for you, Steve, or?
Nope, we don't have a hearing, right?
No, we have no hearing.
There's no hearing. Okay.
Steve.
No hearing. I don't know what his name is. All right. Thank you. So the next item is general business.
Mr. Chair, if you would consider taking B out of order?
I'd be happy to.
So this is just a, okay.
No, go ahead.
So this is just a formality. I noticed that you had, we'd already discussed the betterments in Lake Shore South, Old Wood, and Grove Street. Unfortunately, we're not able to overcome the stick of shock for the betterment. Burn Place Extension, however, is moving forward. You did already consider the road width there and gave us some direction on that. But in the voters' pack that goes out, it says, you know, the select board has approved this, finance committee has approved this, their support of it. It was just conspicuous that the planning board hasn't taken a vote to actually support this betterment of Burn Place. And I know that the residents would appreciate that. And it'll make it clear to the voters on, on the 16th, and it will call you up to the microphone and ask, well, why doesn't the planning board support this? So that's just our technical.
No, understand.
And it just as a reminder, I think on July 19th, the board previously voted to recommend this as well. So this would be affirming that earlier.
All right, so any discussion? Darren, you got any on this? Nope, nothing to add. Bob?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Kate?
So just to confirm, they, they want to do betterments to bring it up to public street standards so that they can get public street approval?
Yeah, they want to get accepted as a public way, which is why we came to you first to confirm that the 16-foot travel way that exists and has always existed would be adequate for this particular stretch of road. And we looked at drainage. We don't think that there's going to be much need for, for the drainage. The director and I have both taken a walk out and looked at it, and we're in good shape.
Now that you took the pond out of the middle of it.
We took the pond right out of the middle of that thing. And, and the craters, and several of the bombshells.
Yeah, exactly. With that, anybody have anything else on this?
No.
All right, so I'd like to make, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the planning board recommended town meeting the authorization for burn place extension improvements and betterments, as stated in Article 7 of the special town meeting.
All those in favor? Darren?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Thank you.
And our next general business item is the electric vehicle work, working group for vehicle stations. And I know that we had spoke about this at the last meeting, and we're looking to the public for some volunteers, and we have some. And I think they're still working on a few, Jeff?
Joe will speak to this.
Yes, so just try to be brief as I can, all the work Sierra has been doing. As we do have three members of the general public that have expressed interest in volunteering, John C. Chua, we see here this evening, Jeremy Arnold, and Jerry DeBello. Mrs. DeBello was originally thinking about representing the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, but has decided to be representing, would like to represent as a member of the general public, as we received an email from a new volunteer, Tom Teller, who would like to be the representative from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. That would still leave two spaces open. One of the Economic Development Committee, that the planning board recommended be on there, as well as the Healthy Westford Committee. So it's up to the board, I guess, this evening, if you wanted to vote to.
Do they have a meeting scheduled at this point?
The Economic Development Committee meets later this month. I don't know about Healthy Westford. I don't know if you know, Jeff.
No, I mean, the, the working group. Not, not yet, not yet.
Because they're still populating the membership.
So why don't we, I mean, my.
It's up to the board, but my recommendations will wait till the next meeting. Hopefully they have the members that need, we can put them all at once.
Sure.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah, and I think between now and then, we have a special town meeting. It would be nice to announce there and see if we get additional volunteers.
Sierra has been in contact. I think an announcement either next select board meeting or special town meeting.
Darren, anything on that? Don't sound good.
Works for me.
All right.
Nothing.
Well, all right. Great. I think this, we'll both table this to the next meeting, and hopefully vote them all in then. Review of draft minutes.
There weren't any in the packet.
They weren't in the packet. We received them after the agenda, but we didn't feel like emailing them to the board today. We figured we'll just put them in the next packet, see if time.
Okay. Correspondence reports and updates.
Nothing.
Nothing. Darren?
Nothing, nothing to make.
All right. Having said that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. Your mission statement for the Electric Vehicle, Electric Supply Committee Task Force with a mission statement, was that the one that you guys drafted, or is that hasn't been done yet?
What, what you read to the selectman, I think, or somebody, conservation, whoever. What, what you read to the selectman, I think, or somebody, conservation, whoever.
Conservation, I wanted to tell you that I did that.
Yeah.
I was so impressed with the mission statement and calling for volunteers, that I suggested the Conservation Commission draft a similar statement and have a group that works on native plants in town. I don't know that they will, but it was a great model. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was Joe.
That was Joe we give the credit to?
And Sierra.
And Sierra.
I thought I did it. Everybody but me. I'm okay with that.
All right.
Good delegation.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Darren?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And I say aye.